I would like to call to order the Fairfield, the regular scheduled meeting of Fairfield County Council to order Monday, November the 25th, 2024 at 6:00 PM, Windsboro, South Carolina. Next, if everyone would please stand for the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag. Thank you. I want to start off by recognizing Mr. Keenan, whoever did the decorations for Christmas. This is my first time being in here. They, they, they look good for the holidays. Did you do it? Ms. Roberts did it. Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Next, we are down to the approval of the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect six zero on approving the agenda. Vice Chair Gilbert is at a COG meeting this evening, so he is unable to attend, but he is at another meeting concerning the COG. Next, we are down to invocation. Councilman Roseborough.
That's our head. Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for this day. May our decisions be respectful and our actions guided by the greater good. We humbly ask for your presence in this room as we try to do the business of Fairfield County. All these blessings we ask in your Jesus name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Roseborough. Next, we are down to the approval of minutes. Regular meeting October to 28th, 2024.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the minutes from October to 28th, 2024. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect six zero on approval of minutes. Item number six, public presentations. A Petco donation to the animal shelter. I think we are going to call up Ms. Jo with the animal shelter and it was one other. Mr. Robert.
I have a blurb to read.
Okay, Landra.
As they come forward, the Fairfield County Animal Shelter received a generous donation of $25,000 as part of the Petco Love Grant. This grant will go to help the animal shelter purchase supplies and cut costs associated with caring for our four-legged friends.
Mr. Stevens, if you don't mind, and, and if they don't mind waiting, since we have, since we have four of them to do, if we can just take all the pictures at one time. Thank you. But I will, if y'all wanted to say anything, y'all welcome to, y'all welcome to say something? Do you want to come up and, and say anything? Okay. All right. Thank you for what you do. Next, we are down to recognizing the retirement of Michelle Raven from the finance department.
On Friday, November 8th, 2024 marked the retirement day for Michelle Hollis-Raven. Michelle dedicated 28 amazing years of service to the Fairfield County community in a variety of roles, including Fairfield Memorial Hospital, Fairfield County School District, and Fairfield County. Michelle embodied the qualities of accountability, honesty, and a detail-oriented mindset. Anyone that interacted with her in any of these capacities over the last 28 years was met with a glowing smile and a willingness to aid all of those in need. Michelle is not only part of the Fairfield County family, but a proud community member of her hometown of Windsboro, South Carolina. She now moves on to the next stage in life and is ready for new challenges that await. On her plans for retirement, Michelle stated, "After a brief break, I will be embarking on a new journey." Join us in thanking Michelle Hollis-Raven for her service to Fairfield County and the immense impact she had over her 28-year public service career. Michelle, you will always be a part of the Fairfield County family. In addition to, I have a plaque that's going to be given to her by the finance department, and there are some finance department members present. If, when, at picture time, if you guys would like to come forward and take the, be in the picture with Michelle, and it reads, "Presented to Michelle H. Raven in sincere appreciation for 28 years of outstanding service and faithful dedication to Fairfield County, November 25th, 2024."
Thank you.
Ms. Raven, Ms. Raven, before you walk off, if any council members wish, wish to be heard.
I would just like to thank you for your years of service. You know, we appreciate everything that you've done, and we know you leave a void, but we're hoping that you're working hard to train someone new. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I echo that. I thank you for your service and really appreciate you, and I know you're looking forward to the, your future going forward and hope everything goes well, whatever you choose to do. Also, I'd like to thank Petco for the $25,000 donation to the animal shelter. That was mighty nice.
I just want to say congratulations. I think we started together and it looks like we finishing together then. Thank you.
Ms. Raven, thank you for your time here, your dedication to Fairfield County. You're always welcome to come back. Thank you. You're welcome to stay. You don't have to leave. Next, we are down to C, recognizing the retirement of Alan Watkins with the Community Development Department. Ms. Dr. Roberts.
A proclamation recognizing the retirement of Mr. Alan Reb Watkins. Whereas, Mr. Alan Watkins began his career with Fairfield County as a law enforcement officer between the towns of Windsboro and the sheriff's office, where he served 27 years. For the last 11 years, he served as a dedicated building inspector with the Community Development Department. He was an exemplary member of the department and was committed to ensuring the safety and integrity of Fairfield County. Mr. Watkins had a keen eye for detail and unwavering professionalism that set a high standard for all. Although he's retiring, Mr. Watkins has graciously agreed to continue serving as an inspector on an as-needed basis, as long as it doesn't interfere with the beloved Clemson Tigers and the San Francisco 49ers. There you go. Which speaks to his commitment and selflessness. Therefore, be it resolved, proclaimed, I'm sorry, that Chairman Doug Pauley, District 5, and the members of the Fairfield County Council would like to recognize and congratulate Mr. Alan Reb Watkins on his retirement. As you embark on this new chapter of your life, we wish you all the best. May your retirement be filled with joy, relaxation, and new adventures. Psalms 121 and 8 reads, "The Lord will keep your going out and your coming in from this time on and forevermore. So ordered this 25th day of November, 2024." We also have, on behalf of the Community Development Department, they also have something that they would like to present to you.
Team council members and community members. It is my honor to recognize a remarkable individual who has dedicated many years to ensuring the safety and integrity of our community. Not only has Mr. Watkins been a diligent building inspector, but I am also proud to call him my friend and coworker. Over the years, we have shared many experiences, and I have witnessed firsthand his commitment and passion to his work, during which he has inspected countless buildings, ensuring they meet safety standards and regulation. His attention to detail and dedication has been instrumental in maintaining the safety and well-being of our residents. Beyond his professional achievements, Mr. Watkins is known for his kindness, integrity, and willingness to help others. These qualities have made him a beloved member of our team and community. Please join me in expressing our deepest gratitude to Mr. Alan Reb Watkins for his years of service and dedication. We wish him all the best in his retirement and look forward to seeing the new adventures he will embark upon. Thank you.
Any, any council members wish to be heard? Hold on just a minute, Mr. Watkins. Ms., uh, Ms. Green.
Well, of course, we thank you so much for your service. We thank you for your contributions to the safety of our community, and we appreciate everything that you've done, wishing you the best in your new adventures. And go 49ers!
Mr. Roseborough.
Yes, Mr. Watkins, I, I do want to echo what Ms. Green said. We thank you for all your years of service to the Community Development Department. We wish you the best, man, on your, on your next embark journey. Okay?
Yeah, I echo that too. Congratulations. Appreciate all the work you've done for the county and just, uh, just enjoy your life going forward, whatever that is. And I'm all in with you. Go Tigers!
Mr. Robinson?
I'm not a Tiger fan, but... Uh, Reb, I just want to say congratulations. The work well done, so, thank you.
Reb, me, we were, we were joking a few minutes ago, so I'm gonna tell a little story. Me and Reb been together for a long time. He was my baseball coach when I was a little boy, and then I worked at the police department with him, and now I work at the county with him. Um, so I feel like we've known each other for a long time. Um, you've always been a great friend, a great employee. Um, he told me a few minutes ago that I sure could catch the ball, but I couldn't hit worth a lick. And that's why, and that's why I probably never made it on the field. But, but he tried his best, but we appreciate what you've done for Fairfield County. And, and two words for you, go Cowboys! Appreciate it. Thank you. Next, next we have, and I'm gonna say this probably two times, we have in Fairfield County the National Principal of the Year. So Fairfield County once again has the National Principal of the Year. Dr. Roberts.
With pleasure. Tonight, we recognize Fairfield Central High School Principal, Dr. Tracy Swilly, who was named the 2025 National Principal of the Year by the National Association of Secondary School Principals at the October 21st, 2004 NASP Gala in Washington, DC. This honor comes after being named the 2024 South Carolina Secondary Principal of the Year through the South Carolina Association of School Administrators. Under Dr. Swilly's 12-plus-year leadership, Fairfield Central High School has seen remarkable improvements. One, black, among black students who make up 88% of the student body, math proficiency rates rose from 46% to 74%, and reading proficiency improved from 60% to 76% in the last three years. The school has achieved the highest graduation, blah, graduation rate in school history at 90.1% after two years of her leadership. And 81% of graduates in the class of 2024 were accepted to two- or four-year higher education institutions. Dr. Swilly commented in her acceptance speech, "This award is not just a reflection of my work, but a testament to the power of community, collaboration, and shared purpose. I am proud of the progress we have made, and it's only just begun. This honor belongs to all of us, to the leaders everywhere. Remember this, leadership is not about a title, but about service." We also have for Dr. Swilly yet another award, which reads, "Award of Excellence Presented to Dr. Tracy Anderson Swilly, Fairfield Central High School, in recognition of being named the National Secondary Principal of the Year by the National Association of Secondary School Principals, given by the Fairfield County Council, November 25th, 2024. Excellence through teamwork. Please join us in congratulating the 2025 National Principal of the Year, Dr. Tracy Anderson Swilly."
Ms. Swilly, do you, you have anything you, you would like to say?
Time, it takes a village to raise a child, but it takes a village to educate a child. So I'm thankful for the community support. This is definitely not a solo mission. Um, and I'm just elated to bring the attention, national attention, to what is happening right here in Windsboro, South Carolina. As a girl who grew up in a small rural town of Eastover, South Carolina, I tell my kids all the time, dream big, there are no limits. This award has blown my mind, and so to be able to now live it for them and show them with hard work, dedication, perseverance, and that Griffin pride, anything is possible. So thank you all.
I just want to say thank you to Dr. Swilly. Uh, when I came here over 13 years ago, uh, she was actually the one that hired me at Fairfield Central High School. Um, it literally was like a five-minute interview, and I don't think she regrets it. So, um, we were able to work together for eight years, and I say work together, it wasn't working under her, it was working together. Um, and she knows that she can also call me anytime she needs anything. Now, I mean, it still continues. So, um, she is an amazing asset to Fairfield County, and I am proud to call her a friend. Thank you.
Just really hold on just a minute. Mr. Ruth?
Yeah, I just want to say congratulations. This is truly amazing. Uh, you're an outstanding woman, and, and this is just incredible. And as, I gotta throw this out there too, this is like, as Dabo Sweeney would say about little old Clemson, little old Fairfield County, this is, this is, congratulations, this is amazing, but thank you for all you do.
Ms. Willey, thank you for everything you do for Fairfield County and the Fairfield County School District. We appreciate you. And before she leaves, Ms. Willey wanted me to say, "Go Cox." So, go, go Cox. Thank you, everybody, on all the presentations. Um, that's two employees that worked for Fairfield County for a very long time. So it's a lot of knowledge leaving here in Fairfield County, absolutely. Next, we are down to item number seven. First public comment session. Dr. Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council, John Jones.
John Jones, District 4, Blair, South Carolina. I downloaded the Fairfield County Council regular meeting agenda the other day uh, in preparation coming to the meeting. And I noticed that it said, "Resolution Number 202406, amending the organizational rules and bylaws of Fairfield County Council." I'm like, all right, that, that doesn't ring a bell of any kind whatsoever, so I started digging. I mean, I've got, uh, just to let you know, I've got back issues of voice this deep. I got back issues of Jenkinsville Water Company, same thing about this deep. And then every article that pertains to anything county council has any dealings with, about the same depth. So I'm looking through everything, and I cannot find anything on a Resolution 202406 or any other until I got back to, what, 2018, something like that, or 20? And it was back when Billy Smith was the county council chairman. That's a long time ago. Do these things get renewed every year? I mean, good gravy, that's a long time ago. But being, be it may, I figured I'd use that as a template to get where I'm going. If another one of these things is in the offing, the public who put you in office and who you spend our money, because it is our money, you're, that's tax money from our pocketbooks that you use, deserve better than your signature block whenever something comes up before county council. That's ridiculous. It really and truly is. These are the people that depend on you to make good judgments and good decisions on their behalf, and that deserves better than just a signature block. So, going back to the, this antique, basically, the one thing that I keyed on was Section Number 11 Code of Conduct. Fairfield County Council believes that the public interest is best served when meetings are conducted in an atmosphere of mutual respect and civility. Guys, it actually starts with you. Honest to Pete. Not digging in on you or anything else like that, but there's been two instances where certain individuals have dug in on other individuals in here. Most specifically, and most recently, the esteemed colleague from District 3 comes up with something that she's basically stomped on. That's bad behavior in a man. The rest of you guys shouldn't have tolerated it, not for one second. People are looking at us, they're looking at Fairfield County. People that want to bring companies and businesses in here. If they see behavior like that, they're gonna turn away. It's time to tighten up.
Randy Bright.
There's a lot of good topics in today's agenda. We have an H-Tax Committee topic that we've been working on for over a year now. We have Reform Bill for animal care, animal welfare, that we've been working on for a decade. That's on, on the agenda.
Uh, but that never happens, we don't have a communication, there is no dialogue, and I don't think that's polite in a public meeting. You call a public meeting to the public, we say something, we should hear something back. Maybe we can learn something, maybe you can learn something. Um, I can go on for twenty minutes telling you all the things I think that are wrong, what I'd like to hear is what you think is right and how you're gonna improve things. Not talk, but action. Actually show us and tell us, "On this day, we're gonna do this, on this day, we're gonna do that." A million and a half dollars we lost on fines, we could've supplied a whole fire department for a million and a half dollars, but that day is coming and gone. Thank you.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
Ms. Roberts? Next, we are down to Public Hearings Nine. Number nine, Ordinance Resolutions and Orders. First reading ordinance, eight thirty-nine, and ordinance of the County Council for Fairfield County, authorizing the execution of a First Amendment to Intergovernmental Sewer Infrastructure Agreement by and between the Town of Windsboro, Fairfield County, and the Fairfield Joint Water and Sewer System and other matters related thereto.
So move.
It's been moved and properly seconded, this is first reading, there's no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect, six-zero on first reading ordinance number eight thirty-nine. Item B, Resolution Number 2024 dash zero-six, a resolution of Fairfield County Council, amending the organizational rules and bylaws of Fairfield County Council.
So move, Mr. Chair?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, is there any discussion?
Can we get an explanation, just to clarify what?
Mr. Morgan?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of council, you have before you this evening Resolution Number 2024 dash zero-six, and what this resolution does is addresses the, uh, as Mr. Jones pointed out, the bylaws of Fairfield County Council, which was last amended in 2018. This amendment here focuses specifically on the public comment sessions. Currently, the bylaws have two public comment sessions, the first public comment session, which is directed solely to items that are on the agenda and provides for the rules that we're all familiar with, with the number of speakers, three minutes, et cetera, and then there's also a second public comment session that the bylaws provide for, and that public comment session is allowed basically any matter that is pertinent to Fairfield County. So, for example, ridiculous example, can't come in and say something about the United Nations, because that doesn't have any pertinence or relevance to Fairfield County, but it's something that is specifically directed to Fairfield County. What this resolution does, amends those bylaws as follows, it basically takes out the first public comment section, and that's good, that, that information's contained in Section Thirteen and Section Fourteen of the current bylaws, and then what it does is, it changes the second public comment session and makes that the, the singular public comment session, and that would be allowable for topics, whether it's on the agenda or not, any topic that the public wishes to present to council could be brought forward in the, the singular public comment section. Again, the same rules would apply with the three minutes, decorum, so on and so forth, but that's what the resolution does. So, in English, takes out the two public comment sessions, merges them into one, and then provides for any topic, whether it's on the agenda or whether it's pertinent to be brought forward to council at that time.
Is there a reason that we, I mean, so some, you have fifteen people that want to speak, but ten don't get to speak on one, at one time, so what happens to the other five?
At that point, based upon, it's the same thing that happens now, there have been times where we've had an overflow capacity crowd, and those persons are unfortunately unable to speak. There are times, however, for example, during public hearing, that there is the opportunity that there are certain items that are brought for council that are on the agenda, that a member of the public could speak in the public hearing, as opposed to potentially speaking in the public comment.
Well, what is the purpose in doing away with the two like it's been?
I, I think that's a, a decision that is, was internally discussed with council, and I was just given direction, just to make these edits and changes like this. I think that would be an appropriate comment or discussion point amongst members of council.
I don't agree with it. Thank you.
Mr. Ruth?
Isn't it also possible in a situation where we had an overflow of speakers, that, uh, the chairman could extend that? Does the chairman have the authority to, yeah, discretion to extend that, so?
There is discretion at that point in time, correct, in, in the, in that dis- likely scenario, then yes, it could be a decision of the chair at that point in time to allow for additional speakers to come forward.
The last time we had the overflow, our chairman would not let them speak after it went over ten.
Yes, ma'am, that's a, again, that's a decision of, of the chair.
Any, any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed?
Nay.
Let the record reflect, five-one on approving Resolution 2024 dash zero-six. Next, we are down to Board and Commission Minutes. This is for information only, Aeronautics Commission, August the twentieth, 2024, and October the fifteenth, 2024. Yeah, just for information only. Eleven Board and Commission Appointments. We are down to the Accommodations and Hospitality Tax Committee. Mr. Killian.
It's our Mr. Chairman. Uh, yes, sir, we have, uh, the continuing item of the, uh, appointments to that board. We have been, um, accepting applications for funding, we did open that process, uh, but we still need to get the committee in place to start reviewing those applications, and of course, there are certain requirements as to what industries they have to come from. I think, Dr. Roberts, you've had, uh, one application, another application withdrawn?
That is correct, Mr. Killian.
Okay, so there are several that are still pending, um, so whenever council is ready to appoint some of those folks, we, we'll, we'll have some applications and some work for them to, to do.
And does everyone have the names that's already been submitted? And that's not a, that's not an action item, unless we want to take action out on, right?
I, I think you could, uh, I think we're in a position, if you wanted to appoint, you don't have to point the full board if you don't have all seven positions, but if you have people in mind that you're interested in nominating, you, somebody could make a motion to nominate candidate X, and y'all could vote on it.
No, I was just gonna say, my thought would be that let's wait till we, till we get a full slate and appoint them all at the same time, that's, that's my thinking, but, and what is, what is our deadline, when do we need to have this?
I don't know that there is a specific deadline, uh, obviously, the money is appropriated in your current budget, so it'd have to be done during this budget process, but there are folks that, that have been recurring, uh, appropriate, get recurring appropriations from that fund, and I think, uh, they depend on some of that for their operations and things, so I think we probably need to move relatively quickly. But we'll make another push to, uh, to get, uh, applications in for the positions. I know Mr. Stevens has done that, and we've got it, I think it's still on our website, it's still up, looking for, so we're trying to drum up folks to come serve.
May I just make a comment? I think what happens a, a lot of times when we take a look at those people who might serve on this committee, if they're serving on the committee, they may not be able to apply for the Accommodation and Hospitality Taxes. So, many of the people who qualify for this are not applying because they deny themselves an opportunity to be considered for a grant. So, um, I think that's kind of difficult to get around, and I think that that's an issue that we have to kind of look as to how we might solve that.
The, the state law, and, and Mr. Morgan can address this better than I can, the state law essentially sets up what appears to be conflicts of interest, uh, just because of the, of the people that have to serve on it. I don't know that it necessarily keeps them from applying, they just have to recuse themselves when their application comes up before the board, so they couldn't, they rightly probably ought to leave the room and not be involved in the discussion at, at all, but I think they can apply, they just can't vote to give their own agency any of the funding, if that makes sense.
Discussion. Mr. Killian, if you would, just, I guess, make sure all the council members, I, I feel pretty sure we do, but make sure everybody has the names that's already submitted. Okay.
Mr. Chair, do we, um, excuse me, lodging industry is too, do we have anybody, um...
Ms. Su- Ms. Susan Yinner?
Yeah, that's right.
I think she's...
That's the only one.
Yeah.
Ms. Johnson from Ridgeway, or did she withdraw? No, she did withdraw. Ms. Johnson from Ridgway, I think, I had applied at one time.
I think she's still on there.
Okay.
But we don't have any motel, hotel, anybody?
Oh, I don't think so.
All right. Next, we are down to item twelve, O Business, discussion of Ad-Hoc Committee to Review Animal Control Ordinance. Mr. Killian.
Mr. Chairman, um, I'm not sure that the, um, proposed guidelines got into your packet, uh, did they get in there? Didn't make it into mine, that's why I was concerned. So, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at that, but that, that sets up the mission and the purpose, it, it sets some guardrails for the committee, uh, the composition of it, how we're gonna organize it, who's gonna help support it from a staff perspective, and then when they're finished with their work, um, it sunsets, it goes away, it doesn't become a permanent committee. I, so if, if any of you have had, have any questions about it, we'll try to answer them for you.
Uh, so, does, I, I know, I see this, uh, consists of seven members appointed by council, would, would our committee, or would it be full council? Would our committee pick seven or ten to bring to full council, or is just, just, just come straight to full council?
Um, I think, I think you could set that up either way you wanted to, but I, I think the appointments would have to be made by the full council.
Right, right, I didn't know whether we did...
You could do recommendations from the committee.
Right, okay. So, how do we, how do we want to handle that?
Yeah. So, we're not ready, I mean, we're not ready to appoint members tonight, so, Mr. Morgan, we would, um, let the committee come up with the name. Y'all already done the requirements and what we're gonna need to do for the committee?
I, I'm sorry, I think, I think what we're looking for tonight is for council to adopt these as the guidelines and the mission for the committee, and then you can start recruiting.
Right.
And then, Mr. Chair, to answer your question about the appointments, it wouldn't come from the committee, it would come from the cha- the council as a whole, and I think the intent was with there's being seven members and of council and seven members on the ad-hoc committee, I think the intent was to allow each council person to be able to pick someone to be on the committee, but as Mr. Killian has said, it would be if council wishes to adopt these guidelines as, in essence, the roadmap, the, the toolkit that the ad-hoc committee can use, then that way council can go when they wish to talk to someone about potentially serving, say, "This is what we're expecting," kind of like your duties and tasking, so to speak, and that way, that individual, whoever council, each council wants to talk to can say, "Okay, this is what we're asking you to do, would you agree to serve?"
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, one other thing, I'm sorry, Mr. Ruth, did you...
No, I was just gonna ask, you know, each, act, that's good, I think each council member selects one, but it wouldn't necessarily have to be from your district, just each has a choice, is that right?
That was the comment I was getting ready to make.
Okay.
We, we left that open because you, you're probably gonna want certain types of disciplines and, and that kind of thing on the committee, and it may not be able to be done by council district.
It seems as if the, um, Advisory Ad-Hoc Committee outline that's here seems sufficient to me to approve, to, to go ahead and let this, um, committee begin.
Okay, if I can get a motion to approve the guy...
Most, most to approve.
I don't know that it necessarily keeps them from applying, they just have to recuse themselves when their application comes up before the board. So they couldn't, they rightly, probably ought to leave the room and not be involved in the discussion at all. But I think they can apply, they just can't vote to give their own agency any of the funding, if that makes sense.
Discussion. Mr. Killian, if you would, just, I guess, make sure all the council members, I, I feel pretty sure we do, but make sure everybody has the names that's already submitted. Okay.
Mr. Chair, do we, um, excuse me, lodging industry is two, do we have anybody?
Ms. Suz, Ms. Susan Yinner?
Yeah, that's right.
I think she's.
That's the only one.
Yeah.
Ms. Johnson from Ridgeway, or did she withdraw? No, she didn't withdraw. Ms. Johnson from Ridgeway, I think, I had applied at one time.
I think she's still on there.
Okay.
But we don't have any motel, hotel, anybody?
Oh, I don't think so.
All right. Next, we are down to item twelve O business, discussion of ad hoc committee to review animal control ordinance. Mr. Killian.
Mr. Chairman, um, I'm not sure that the, um, proposed guidelines got into your packet. Did they get in there? Didn't make it into mine, that's why I was concerned. So, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at that, but that, that sets up the mission and the purpose. It, it sets some guardrails for the committee, uh, the composition of it, how we're gonna organize it, who's gonna help support it from a staff perspective. And then when they're finished with their work, um, it sunsets, it goes away. It doesn't become a permanent committee. So if, if any of you have had, have any questions about it, we'll try to answer them for you.
So does, I, I know, I see this, uh, consists of seven members appointed by council. Would, would our committee, or would it be full council? Would our committee pick seven or ten to bring to full council, or does just, just just come straight to full council?
I think, I think you could set that up either way you wanted to, but I, I think the appointments would have to be made by the full council.
Right, right. I didn't know whether we did.
You could do recommendations from the committee.
Right, okay. So how do we, how do we want to handle that?
Yep. So we're not ready, I mean, we're not ready to appoint members tonight. So, Mr. Morgan, we would, um, let the committee come up with the name. Y'all already done the requirements and what we're gonna need to do for the committee?
I, I'm sorry, I think, I think what we're looking for tonight is for council to adopt these as the guidelines and the mission for the committee.
Right.
And then you can start recruiting.
Right.
And then, Mr. Chair, to answer your question about the appointments, it wouldn't come from the committee, it would come from the, the council as a whole. And I think the intent was with there being seven members and of council and seven members on the ad hoc committee, I think the intent was to allow each council person to be able to pick someone to be on the committee. But as Mr. Killian has said, it would be if council wishes to adopt these guidelines as, in essence, the roadmap, the, the toolkit that the ad hoc committee can use, then that way council can go when they wish to talk to someone about potentially serving, say, this is what we're expecting, kind of like your duties and tasking, so to speak. And that way, that individual, whoever council, each council wants to talk to can say, okay, this is what we're asking you to do, would you agree to serve?
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, one other thing, I'm sorry, Ms. Ruth, did you?
No, I was just gonna ask, you know, each, that's good, I think each council member selects one, but it wouldn't necessarily have to be from your district, just each has a choice.
That was the comment I was getting ready to make.
Okay.
We, we left that open because you, you're probably gonna want certain types of disciplines and, and that kind of thing on the committee, and it may not be able to be done by council district.
It seems as if the, um, advisory ad hoc committee outline that's here seems sufficient to me to approve, to, to go ahead and let this, um, committee begin.
Okay, if I can get a motion to approve the guy.
Most to approve.
Second.
Say it, guys, Mr. Chair.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any further discussion? See a nun, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect six, zero. Mr. Morgan, do we need to table, go back and table the board and commission appointments for, um, accommodations and hospitality tax committee?
Mr. Chair, I would be, I think it'd probably be best not to table it, inasmuch as there's no action that was taken by council tonight. If you were to table it, it would be required to come back for the next meeting, understanding we've got Thanksgiving and a kind of a short turnaround. It might be best to, to kind of have it in a situation with a little bit of flexibility. That way administration and council can bring it back at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Next, we are down to new business nun fourteen county administrators report. Mr. Killian.
Mr. Chairman, the first item that I have under my report is, uh, the introduction of our new emergency management director. It gives me great pleasure to, uh, ask Joey to come up. Uh, Mr. Joey Price comes to us, um, with a, a lot of experience as emergency management director at, in Marion County, where he was also over nine-one-one, risk management, and EMS. Uh, he's very familiar with FEMA, um, being almost a coastal community. He's had a hurricane or four come through, and, uh, he's, he's very familiar with FEMA's processes and regulations. Very well, um, in tune with the folks at the State Emergency Management Division. He's worked with them, uh, for a long period of time, and has a great relationship with other emergency management directors around the state. So it's, it's my pleasure to have him, um, join our team, uh, and just as a personal note, he likes fishing, hunting, and car races, and, uh, he also likes playing a cornhole, so if you're gonna bring a cornhole out, we'll, we'll have a cornhole tournament with him. So, welcome, Mr. Joey Price.
Mr. Price, do you, do you care to say anything? Okay. Thank you for being here. Mr. Killian.
Mr. Chairman, the next item is the purchase of a, a new ambulance. Uh, we have, um, finally received a quarter of a million dollars from the Department of Public Safety that has been, uh, kind of hanging out there for us to, uh, to purchase an ambulance, and it must be used for vehicles. Um, the problem is with ambulance prices being what they are now, you can't get one for two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. But Mr. Chief Martin has found one, uh, that will be available in April, uh, for three-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand and some change. Uh, so what we're recommending tonight is, because of the status of our fleet and how long it takes to get ambulances, we've got, uh, three units on order that have been on order for, uh, I don't know, a long time. And we're not expecting those anytime soon. The average mileage on our fleet right now is about a hundred-and-sixty-one thousand miles, and we have some that are over two-hundred thousand. So this is an opportunity for us to, uh, take that money and get an ambulance that, um, for about a third of the price of the cost that we were coming out of our pocket with it. So we're recommending that council, uh, accept the grant and authorize the purchase of the new ambulance. We have a quote attached, uh, from AES, um, if I can get my fingers to work, um, attached with the three-thirty-one, four-thirteen that we talked about. That will take an additional eighty-one thousand, four-hundred-and-thirteen dollars that we did not budget for. But my recommendation to you right now is not worry about a budget amendment, because we do have sufficient funds in our contingency fund, uh, to cover that cost and get the ambulance ordered. As the budget goes forward for the rest of the year, we're a quarter of the way through, a third of the way through, there may be a time in the spring that you may have to do a budget amendment to cover this and put that money back in the contingency fund. But if you do a good job managing the budget between now and the end of the year, maybe you won't have to. So I recommend that you don't do a budget amendment now, just take the additional out of the contingency fund and let us get that ambulance ordered.
Mr. Ruth?
I'll make a motion to approve.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Killian, is this the, um, grant that Representative McDaniel and Shirley Green did?
It is, it is.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect six, zero on the purchase of the new ambulance. Mr. Killian.
Mr. Chairman, the next item, I think, I think there was the October financials we put in your, um, agenda packet. Uh, not gonna spend a lot of time on them, I think, I think the safest thing to say is, um, everybody's on a pretty good track right now, based on where we are. Uh, just to very quickly show you what, just to go through it, the first column is the adopted budget. The next column will be any amendments the council does, and then the amended budget will be the third column. We show your current transactions, your year-to-date encumbrances and transactions. Uh, but I guess maybe the, the one that a lot of people focus on is that next to last column shows the percentage used through the year. I wouldn't get too hung up on that because things don't, we're, we're a third of the way through the year, so everybody should be on thirty-three percent, but they're not gonna be because of different things that happen. But, uh, I can assure you that me and the finance department go through this, and we try to see if there's anybody that's headed in the wrong direction and, uh, you know, throw the rope out and rein them back in and see if we can get them where we need to be. But right now, we believe everything looks like it's in pretty good shape, but I'll be glad to try to answer any questions if you have any, if you've had the opportunity to look at, or if you get another chance to look at it and want to call, uh, just do, and we'll see if we can get any answers for you that you need. But we'll try to start providing these every month, uh, so that you can, um, get a review of your finances where we are, and, and if we see anything that's concerning, we'll certainly point that out to you as well.
I don't have one on that, that particular, but I just, uh, do you have any update on the audit?
Yes, sir, we, we're probably looking at, uh, January early now. Um, we've had a vacancy occur in the finance department that is, and, and of course, with Michelle's departure on the payroll, we've had to shift some things around to do payroll. So, uh, we expect the auditors to be in here, uh, first of December. Uh, they've done a lot of the, uh, we've submitted a lot of stuff to them, but they still have to come do their fieldwork and their samples. Uh, we have most of that, we think, ready for them to come in. Uh, we'll probably have to get a short extension, but, uh, I think we should, still on target for doing January.
Administrator search update.
Yes, sir, very quickly, um, the deadline for applications was last Friday. We did, I did a, um, a national search, I published the advertisement in the National Association of Counties, um, or on their website, and the National Association of County Administrators, also posted it on the International City County Management Association website, uh, and got several, um, candidates from there. I think we did get a, a number of, um, strong applications. I'm optimistic, I haven't had a chance to look at all of them yet. I did start looking at them as they came in, I got a flurry of activity at the end of last week, and I haven't had a chance to look at all of those. Uh, but we do have, uh, some folks that, um, I'm comfortable, once I get a chance to look at them, and I haven't talked to any of them, once I get a chance to look at them, I'm looking forward to bringing those to y'all for, uh, for discussion. But I was pretty pleased with the, uh, the response, and I think, um, I hope you will be too when we get a chance to start talking about it.
Can you say how many applicants, you've got, applications you've got?
Yes, sir, we got twenty-five.
All right, thank you, Mr. Killian, for that update.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, uh, Mr. Stevens dropped this in my lap right before the meeting. Um, just a, just, uh, information, I'm sure the middlelands council and governments is, uh, looking for citizens to fill out a survey on transportation issues in Fairfield County. It, that survey is on our website, so we'd like to encourage folks to go to our website and look for that survey to, uh, fill out. The COG is looking for all the info they can get and input they can get on that survey. James, anything else I missed on that?
The deadline is December thirty-first.
Thank you.
Mr. Killian, do you have an update on the one point for me and fine?
Yes, ma'am, um, the, um, the IRS did send our auditors a, um, I forgot what the letter's called, it's, it's got an official name. Uh, but they are, um, they, they told us to expect another sixty days before we got another response. Uh, I can tell you on a personal issue with my father's estate, I got four of those sixty-day letters before they finally answered my question. Uh, so I don't know how many of those we'll get, but the IRS has us on their radar, and they haven't responded. That, they need another sixty days to review, uh, the appeals that our auditors put in. But I don't know whether that sixty days is real or not.
Next, we are down to clerkly councils report nun county council time. Any council members wish to be heard? Mr. Ruth?
I just want to wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving, and, um, I think the Windsor Parade is, is Sunday? At four-thirty, and the Ridgway Parade is, is that right?
This Sunday, Windsor, and December the eighth is the Ridgway, and, uh, December the sixth through the eighth is the Ridgway, that stuff's on pretty much every night. Good tree lighting and parades and stuff like that.
That's all.
Any other council members? I'd just like to say a few things, and I'm, I'm pretty sure Mr. Robinson, who's been here just as long as I have, will agree. You know, you, you have a few, a few citizens that, that come every other council meeting, and, um, they're not happy with any council. Um, they're not happy with any chairperson, um, because that chairperson does not cater to their needs. You think when somebody gets in this seat that they gonna cater to you and they gonna favor you, and you realize quickly it don't happen. And, and this has been going on for fifteen years, for eight years I've been on council, it has happened repeatedly. Um, and, and to, to sit there and, oh, you demand new leadership, that's great. But as soon as that new leadership don't cater to you, you're gonna turn on them as well. We have an election every two years. Feel free to sign up, put your name on the ballot, and see if you can win an election. You got all the answers for Fairfield County, but you don't do anything but complain. That's all you do is complain. Nobody in this seat is gonna cater to anybody in that audience. We have a job to do, and we're gonna do what's best for Fairfield County. Next, the Fairfield County Sheriff's Office is hosting its annual toy drive this week of December, the week of December the second through the sixth. They will be accepting toys for kids up to age sixteen. All toys can be dropped off at the sheriff's office anytime that week during the hours of nine-thirty a.m. and four-thirty p.m. Fairfield County EMS is hosting the fifth annual first responders' toy giveaway on Saturday, December the fourteenth, from ten a.m. to twelve p.m. This is made possible through a grant giving to Fairfield County EMS by the National First Responders Children's Foundation. This is for children of Fairfield County first responders. On Tuesday, December the third, at seven-thirty p.m., Sergeant over community-oriented policing Ron Mull and EMS Captain Scott Smith will be live on WIS TV to talk about their respective toy drive and giveaways. The Fairfield County Animal Control and Adoption Center is doing a merry Pausmas supply drive through the holiday season. Supplies needed can be found on the county Facebook page, Instagram page, and the county website news. Donations can be dropped off at the Fairfield County Animal Shelter during the hours of nine a.m. through four p.m., Monday through Friday. Next, we are down to executive session. In executive session, A, discussion of matters relating to the proposed location, expansion, or the provision of services encouraging location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by Fairfield County known as Project Red pursuant to South Carolina Code thirty dash four dash seventy A five. Receipt of legal advice, item B, receipt of legal advice in discussion regarding the employment of a new Fairfield County administrator pursuant to South Carolina Code thirty dash four dash seventy A one. C, receipt of legal advice in discussion of negotiations incident to the proposed sale of property owned by Fairfield County pursuant to South Carolina Code thirty dash four dash seventy A two.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? See a nun, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect six, zero. We are now in executive session.
...
Do I have a motion to come out of executive session?
For move.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to come out of executive session to put on the record there was no vote or action taken in executive session. Any other motions on the floor?
Second.
It's been moved, it's been moved and properly seconded to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect six zero, we are adjourned.